If anyone's recording this meeting, they may get known. Michael, Dave had a request that we kinda keep a outline of our actions. Could you jot that kinda stuff down? I thought you might have to use it. Just something that they can look at until the minutes are transcribed. There's composite agenda on the table up front here, if anyone needs one.
It's today, the ninth, for the eighth.
First two items were to shred a couple of invoices from Charles O'Leary. We have no public hearings or continued public hearings, so we'll go down to item six. First up is Maria La Porta, best friends preschool.
Hi. So we're here tonight because we wanted to discuss the completion of the parking lot and the flagpole that's going up. I have a letter from the school department. We opened last Tuesday and the buses, first of all, the arrows are going the wrong way. We want permission to turn the arrows around the other way. And also there's not enough room. We put barrels out where the circle is supposed to be with the flagpole and the bus cannot go around that.
Nor the fire truck.
Yeah. So I have a letter from Jeffrey Tatro from the Williams Schools.
Do you have a copy of your?
I don't have any plans with me.
February fourth.
I think it's February fourth, there's a plan.
No, I don't have any plans with me. But as you know, the last meeting that we were at, you guys had the wrong plans and there was a lot of confusion that night.
I told us you should have brought me.
We just need the right plans. We were looking at the wrong plans and she was telling us.
Yeah.
I dropped them. Set to each department.
Yeah.
I think I just lost in the mix.
Yeah.
No, the next day I went to the town hall and they couldn't find them at the town hall either. John Churchill and I went through all the meeting minutes and found the meeting minutes and that's how we knew that there was no islands on the.
We approved it on March twelfth, but the plan stated number six.
So as there is, that was the island. So if I got the arrows going the wrong way, so the fire truck needs to come in this way with the school buses. They gotta go in the other way. It's the wrong way. They need to come in just like a regular parking lot, come in, drop off the children and make the turns.
Yeah.
But the island there, they're cutting off the back tires. It's chalking the wheels. They can't make the radius. So Mike Dykes recommends not to put it in because there's no way you're gonna get a ladder truck in there. It's hot enough with the regular truck.
Okay, so is the arrows coming in the parking lot here?
Hi.
Correct.
You look nice tonight.
So we're located in the parking lot here.
Exactly.
Yeah, everything's much better.
But it was just temporary.
Yeah, just temporary, yeah.
I saw you. I was, I parked my car in the back.
Sorry, couldn't make it say.
I think it was always designed that way anyways, cause that's why you had the access rear with the turnaround.
Oh, that's fine. I understand.
It had the service rear, exactly. Correct.
So that you can get by.
Right. What it's doing, it's blocking both the road and the circle. What you see is that's all painted fire line all the way up here on both sides. There's no parking, no one.
Yeah.
Or you wanna be able to get the school bus in.
If full school buses come in here.
Yeah, full size, forty footers.
Cause I know they were doing drop offs here, so.
Yeah, now they changed their mind. They don't want the children getting crossing the highway. So as we designed this for the bus to come in, for the forty footer, we had to take these parking spots out, block them out. So you can have that bus clear there without hitting any vehicles.
And by taking those out, did you still meet the code requirements?
Yeah, we still met the codes. There was four extra spots, so we took out two right here and we put two here.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
And switched them over.
Yep. And all this will stay, so the buses will come and turn.
Still turn as long as the arrows, put the arrows right away coming out.
Yeah.
A little confusion.
Hmm.
It always looks good on paper.
And this was just a landscaped island with a book for a flag?
It was just a landscaped island. No, it was no flagpole. I added the flagpole because at school I wanted American flags, but I'm gonna move it over to here if it's okay.
Oh. Sure.
And take it, take it right out, put the flagpole over here to light on it.
Mm-hmm.
For safety.
Other lights here?
No, there's no lights. Those shrubs. But I've gone and put a light flag to keep it up all night.
Okay.
Is that an island or just striped?
That's just striped. Fire line, striped, no parking. There's no islands nowhere. That's the only one.
And this is the final set of names?
Yes.
That is the most current that we can find.
It's the date.
The sixth of February? Is that the date you know?
Yes, that's February.
That's the final one?
That's the final one, that's the twelve.
Okay.
Should be the seventh edition.
Yeah.
Six seven.
Seven, we had John.
Seven. It just says five.
Say seven. We had John judge it out.
Just says five on the.
This one says five.
This one that says seventh edition. We don't have, what's the last thing?
This is two six, February sixth, two thousand twelve.
February.
Two, two, two six.
Twelve.
Is it two thousand twenty?
Oh, no, that, that had the garage on it. That was a revision of the garage.
That's the final one.
That's a garage. It's for permit for a service garage in the backyard.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe that's the latest one.
But that's the final one.
That was the last, that was the seventh revision.
So that's what we need to.
It's still the same one. It's just has, shows a garage right there. Everything's the same.
It is almost identical. Yes.
Yeah, it should have, it should have the road around right here, left hand side of the property.
Yeah, it's right here. It's left inside.
Coming down from the street.
Yeah, he's here tonight to talk about removing a small landscape island that is difficult for the buses when they come in.
Buses can't make the turn from that there.
To turn, right, to turn and say well the fire.
So school finally agreed that we could put the kids on the street on the set.
Yeah, they brought, they brought the school bus out today and Mike Dykes was there. We put cones in there and tried to.
I don't know why it was.
It's just, it looks, everyone likes to draw on paper, but you go to do it on site and so on.
We.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We went through this process.
That's what the engineer is supposed to do for you. He's supposed to show you.
Yeah, well, he's supposed to have their radius and the footage in. It said it looks good on paper. Just like all that curve when you made me put it in like that, it's so hard to do.
Yeah, he's supposed to show you a radius. Yeah. Yeah.
It's not, a pencil draws a lot easier than concrete pen.
Yeah, you think? We have a, we have a note from the school department.
There is, there's another plan set due much, talking about that island being a problem.
Yeah, George, it was for the garage addition.
Gets on the captain, captain Dykes. And we should fix that, right? Huh?
I pulled it up.
Yeah.
And then there twice, just before, day before she opened, a couple days later.
I just want. Yeah. Yeah.
It's got all you do, you turn with your car and never run a bus and it's a forty footer.
Yeah. When will you be finishing this parking lot?
As soon as you give me the word.
Let's see, let's see.
And you're just.
I don't want the children. You can only go.
Yeah, well, only on weekends. You can only pay about anything.
Oh, yeah. Have the kids go to a playground and see if they can recover their initials.
Yeah, yeah.
The small bus that has the handicaps.
Yeah.
Little chairs. Yeah. Fit with the seventy seven best.
He said the forty foot is all work, so.
We can close this movie.
Yeah.
I believe he did inspection of this.
Mr. Rowley, do you have a comment on what we're talking about right now?
All's on the plans. We're gonna have to take a vote, I guess, to allow them in on application of the plan itself.
But have you been out there for a site visit?
No, since they striped it. They've been, they've been. They've scraped things on the plank this week and we have to scrape it again.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
The arrow's going the right way this time.
Still planning on moving these two parking spaces as well and taking that up. No, just the five foot sidewalk landscaping. You said all is the same as the last revision.
Same. Yeah. The landscaping's all gonna be for later on anyways.
Yes.
It's all there. They walk the front, they walk the sides.
These are minor modifications, Mr. Jim?
If that's what you, if you deem it to be minor, then let's take a motion to, to say it. We should make a motion to allow the change.
I, I would, I don't have a big problem with it. If Captain Dykes would give us something in writing that it's his opinion that this is a problem to go along with.
In the conditions of approval, it does cite, sign off by the school and final, we have the school.
Yeah.
So we just need to follow it up with the final. That's no problem.
Yeah, he's gonna be there this week, the Choxon service.
There we get a sign up from Dykes.
And the police department, it says.
Yeah.
And the police?
Yeah, the police department's out too.
So, Mr. Chairman, what they're proposing is to move two parking spaces from this side of the parking lot to this side. So that the bus can come in and go around and then they're proposing to remove this island so that the buses can turn safely with the children.
Yeah, that was an engineered design mistake on that.
And the fire truck could turn if they had to.
Why are they gonna make them just, just go in the parking lot versus the street?
Yeah, that was. That's what we asked for.
Cause I think I said that from day one.
We asked for that at the beginning, yeah.
Safer, drop the children off in the parking lot, definitely.
Well, we said, we said that from day one.
Yeah.
Well, no, the school department requested that when we, yeah.
Right. They forced us to work with you on the walkway.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, yeah.
One more.
So, do you'd like to make a motion to?
Yeah.
Sure. Go, give my say.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we allow the applicant to move these two parking spaces which aren't numbered from where they are to the other side so that they don't lose spaces.
Mm-hmm.
And also remove the island pending, we've got a letter from the school department, but pending a letter from the fire department agreeing that it needs to be removed for the ability of the school buses and the fire trucks to travel the parking lot. Way it was originally designed and intended, I believe.
So you'd be removing two parking spaces from the northwest.
Relocating.
Relocating.
Relocating to the east.
They're going to this side.
Side of the property.
Yes, sir.
And removing the island.
Removing the, the island up near the, the access, the eighteen foot wide gravel road. So that the fire trucks can safely get onto that gravel road if they need to.
Yeah, and we wanna, what it is pre, we quietly striped, you wanna show that traffic flow, that might.
The correct way, correct.
Yeah. Could, should we request from J C Engineering that they update the plan?
Record.
For re, rerecording and, and final signatures where there is a modification that has been recorded.
That wouldn't be a bad thing.
Yeah, I can have J C Engineering take care of that.
Would like to have him show the two spaces please moved as you referenced and show that there's adequate space there for us?
Yes, and the island off. Correct.
Okay.
And also remove that island for the safety of the children.
Remove the island.
Okay.
No problem.
Kelly, Mr. Chairman?
So, did you discuss the relocation of the two light bulbs?
Uh, I don't see those on there.
I don't know anything about that.
I, I marked where they are in the plan. Uh, there were two lamp posts that were in the middle of the area to the outside.
Mm-hmm.
I was looking for them in the island.
I had marked them in pen upon one of the sheets.
Yeah. Due to the safety of someone sliding down the hill and hitting him and knocking him over and taking a child out, we moved them to the outskirts. So it gives the same candle watts. We had the electrician design it for, has, gives the same candle watts if the lights were there. They're just to the outsides now away from the children of falling light bulbs.
My observation going by there, I think it was last night, is that the shield, it, it does light that house up on the neighboring property.
Very bright. Both, both neighbors are complaining.
So I think some adjustment needs to be made at least until all landscaping is done.
Yeah, I'd like to turn them off earlier.
If, if that's something that we're gonna need to approve, Mr. Chairman, I would want something from the electrician or a light engineer showing.
It's a daycare, it's a daycare and we're closed at night, so to keep the neighbors happy, we'd like to shut the lights off early on.
Yeah.
We do.
Well, they're on timers.
They're on timers, but we get to cut them down.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that they are adequate lighting, Mr. Chairman, based on the new locations before we approve that.
Yeah, and we do make mention of that in the conditions of approval as far as revisiting it, revisiting the light.
At nighttime, yeah.
Are they just being moved over to the side and these are.
They're already on the sides now. One's here, this one here.
So. Go over here, not here.
Okay, I see, okay, okay. That's, that's your comment, Charlie?
Yeah.
So we have. So.
Oh, you had a circle with an okay on the ones that were.
Ones that have marked okay are, are in the location where they are in the ground, but I have marked the location and the relocated ones as well.
Right there, right there, same. Facing this way.
Oh, so you put two here to rem, and remove these and then you still have all these. Okay.
Yeah, facing them, move those. Well, everything else is in place, so.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
And she has one more question. Her new sign is that size. She'd just like to get okay from the board.
Yeah, I think I might be trying to record.
Mm-hmm. It's a theo on there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where does that go?
That one is right here. It's two sided. Goes right in that island. Back off the horse that doesn't go off the grid.
I was gonna say, there's no issues.
Yeah, it's coming in.
Is it, is there a sign shown on the plane?
Same thing as the stop sign. Yes.
Yes, but I don't know the dimensions, Mr. Jim?
Not showing any of the planeset.
No, they just threw a sign in there. They didn't actually put a dimension, but before we put the sign in, we wanted to make sure with you guys it was okay.
Does it meet the sign by law?
Yeah, yes.
Do you have any input on that, Mr.?
What's that?
The sign. Since you're instrumental in writing the new bylaw.
But if they have the potential, locate that on that tier.
Go back to the.
Go back to where it is.
So I can have them located right here in the island where it's supposed to go.
Where is it?
At least we'll have the dimensions now. It doesn't show what it's supposed to be right in that island. The electro conduit's there, but there's no.
What's referenced, Mr. Chairman, by the sign in the approval, anything?
Uh, as far as the lighting goes, after construction is complete, planning board will evaluate the installation of the outdoor lighting to ensure that it's shielded from the public roadway and there's no spill of endog layer onto a building property. So we did leave the door open for review of the lighting.
Okay.
Building.
Uh.
Just complaining.
Yeah.
Square footage.
Yeah.
Are you putting any s-
Well, not complaining, it's right there, so.
Are you, are you putting any signs on the building?
Yeah, yes, but only one sign can be lighted, correct?
Well, there's some dimension issues that you just have to address. How does that work, Mr. Slaven?
The signs go through the building, it's spec.
For the building inspector, he determines the light.
Yeah, if, if the lighting doesn't comply with the front sign by law, they have to go through the Z B A for.
Right, so that wouldn't be something we would.
The main sign up in front of the street is on the hundred twenty square t, square, no, one twenty square. We don't count each side as a separate, it's combined as a total. So it's one business, so that.
It's one twenty, that's big.
So one twenty is okay.
And it's a lot smaller now.
That one is ten by, ten by eight.
Ten by five, yeah.
So that falls in the.
And forty eight inches off the ground. That's higher than we've approved recently, but. Where is it going?
Right here in this island.
And, and that island's gonna be landscaped, how?
Uh, the landscape is just a low profile flowers on both of these. No obstruction to traffic. That's why we don't have anything high on these islands.
Mhm.
It's all low prof, low f, all the way to get to here, then it picks up.
Yeah. But, yeah, landscaping actually aren't on the plan. It is better to do.
See the bushes, those bushes are showing.
So the light's already there.
The light, the light structure's there, yes.
You had proposed a sign on this side before.
Yeah.
And so were you trying to move it to the outside or this side is bigger?
Did you?
Right. This side is bigger. Either side is.
I would say leaving on the bigger side, then we don't have to make that decision.
Leaving on the bigger side, okay, okay. All right.
Yeah, we do. Is it destruction, is it existing, yeah? V B Ls. Construction show, I think construction is there.
That's true, because then it won't be on the stop sign sign too. There's a stop signs here, so.
Okay.
Distractions, yeah.
Yep, yep.
She said the sign is not lit.
No.
It's not a lit sign.
It's not illuminated, the street sign?
No, only the building signs.
No.
Looking at the, uh, photometrics. The intensity here.
Hmm.
Okay, so they got moved to this location here.
No, they moved in here. They put, they took these two, you said, and put them here. Yeah, that's, and that's how Charlie drew it out.
Okay, here's the other one.
No, wait, there? Charlie, could you help us for a second?
And we could put it closer to the ground if you think it's too high.
We're talking about the lights right now. We're trying to make sure that they're not, they moved, they took these two lights out.
These, these two had been relocated.
You said they relocated these two.
These, these two are over in here. There's one there, there's one there, and there's one here.
Okay.
Okay?
Then the other one's here.
One of these, they took out over there. Um. These two are not there.
So they moved three lights. I don't know if, what's that say?
It says light.
Okay.
And a light there.
That says okay light.
Okay, those are there. This is here, this is here, this is here. These two are out. There's one that's there.
And that one's not there.
There's an extra one in here. There's an extra light in here.
But there was a light right there. So now there's three?
Yep. There's an extra one down here. These, these two are not in the parking lot.
And, and do you have any experience or opinion on light and dispersment of light and?
Well, there is a plan here that shows the intensity.
Yeah, I know.
So if you wanted, if you wanted to know for sure, take and spot the locations of where these, there's that second light. See, there was a one up in here?
Yeah.
So one went here and the other one went here.
There were two here. You can see where each one of these lights sort of has a covered circle.
Right.
Now you're taking these out.
Right.
So now you've got some spots in here that may not be covered.
Right.
But the only way to know that for sure would be to do the same calculation over again, a computer calculation.
Right.
By spotting these lights with the intensity where they played them out and see how it comes out.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's why I was asking where they were going, so they could figure out the shadow where it was gonna be.
Right. Would, would you move those? Did J C Engineering work with you on?
Yes, those lights are way brighter than what we expected.
That's right. When you put those there, the candle watts, when we had the electrician do it for the candle watts, covers the radius of each light.
Right. Okay.
So you don't have the shadows.
Really?
And like I said, we're not a night business, so we don't want, yeah, I know. Now we got the neighbors complaining.
No, I know, but it's still.
Yeah, just this one here, wherever the new lights are in our location, it should be up here updated, so it shows that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can have John Churchill do it as built, if everything's assigned, the light, I can upgrade.
Everything to have that show, to see the, the coverage again, like you.
Everything we talked about tonight.
We'll have John Churchill marry into the new plan for you. So everything's located in the proper spot for you.
And Mr. Rowley is the peer review, so he would review the final plan for Mr. Churchill and make sure that he's agreed it. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, what was, uh?
That's the sign and they didn't propose to move it, um, but I think it's probably just a little bigger than they expected, but they're, they're planning on putting it where it was originally proposed, which is here. There is a light pole here, so they're gonna have to figure out how to work that into that island, cause that's.
Yeah, the distance, yeah. There's a lot of room there, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
And there's also a sign for closing the building?
Yes.
On the building itself, yes, a light inside it. It just has light shiny on it. But she says this sign is not lit. It's just a fixture.
May control over your square footage.
Right. Right. That's good for, yeah.
Do you have your calc, your sign calculation, uh, on your computer, Al?
No, cause it's not updating the town hall yet.
That, that is smaller than one twenty.
It's smaller than the freestanding ones.
Right, but in conjunction with the building sign, how would that affect the overall?
So you're allowed with building sign also, it's not around forty, so.
So it's not one twenty total?
No.
So it's one twenty plus forty?
One twenty on the freestanding.
Plus maybe forty or something. Thank you.
You have a copy here?
I don't have.
Have me download it, I think David, I think they finally got the signed by law ready to check scenes. All signs require the director of special services sign off and put a stamp on all signs going forward.
Well, they'll have to, if the sign was not included in the permit, they have to go take a permit anyway, so he can evaluate the sizes.
And David Moore is temporarily hired to do co-enforcement.
Gonna do that. And he has the new sign.
So the building inspector will evaluate the square footage on your signs.
Sign, okay, thank you.
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, on the sign is the elevation. They showed a footing of forty eight inches.
I think we're allowed to, the sign, for the base, it's five to six feet.
And then. Okay, it's four feet to the base of the sign.
Yeah, I think we're allowed, it's kind of, uh, for the freestanding.
From the base, that's good, forty eight inches.
Mm-hmm.
I know when we worked on the, on the. Right.
With one of the floors.
Right.
No, that's in the ground, though. Those are posts in the ground. It's gonna sit right on the, it's gonna sit on the ground.
Concrete.
Uh, it, this plan shows it forty eight inches.
Yeah, that, that should be the footing. That should be the concrete footing is forty eight inches.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that should be the footing, that should be the concrete footing, it's forty-eight inches. It's not, it's showing forty-eight inches.
Oh.
It's about s- eight inches showing off ground.
Oh, okay.
It's low profile.
All right.
It's a monument sign.
Those have done it a period of sidelines. Okay, we had a motion to approve the changes.
To the, to the two parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
And to the removal of the island. Since that motion's proposed, though, um, it was brought to our attention that there's been some light changes.
Mm-hmm.
Which, um, I'm, I'm not sure we should approve at this point until J C Engineering gives us the updated plan showing the light coverage and has, allows Mr. Rowley time to review and confirm.
So you wanna act on the parking lot of the island this time?
Yes.
So a motion has been made to approve the minor modifications to the parking field and the removal of the island.
Subject to, uh, a new, new set of plans.
Subject to follow-up ones from fire, police, I believe?
Fire, police, and we have school, and an updated set of plans to be recorded showing the modifications.
Is there a second?
Second.
And also, can I have an extension then on, cause I have, this is only until September twenty-sixth?
I don't know what that is.
It's a, um.
The temporary?
Temporary certificate of occupancy.
Uh. Maybe we have a motion and a second. Call it favorable?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, so that's, that's addressed. Uh, the next would be, we wanna see an updated photometrics plan on the lighting.
Yes.
As well as these changes.
Respect the changes of the, yeah.
We put it on a plan?
Yeah. Respect the changes of the limitations of the, um, moved light poles.
I actually think you've, uh, you've moved.
He ends show, he ends showing the news, the sign on the.
Yeah, I'll have him put the sign in too, definitely.
You know, by dimension, now that we have that.
If it's possible to shut off those lights that are bothering the neighbors.
Yeah, they're on a timer, I'd like to shut them off earlier. We close at six o'clock, so.
So you get those changes, all the changes on the new set of plans, get them back to us.
Yeah, appreciate it.
We're gonna, and get a set to Mr. Rowley immediately?
Yes, definitely have John Churchill.
But what about the, the sign off on the, uh, occupancy permit, and we only have till the twenty-eighth, and that has to be signed off by you guys?
That's, um, on the paving, correct?
Yeah, but we can't do paving if, until we resolve all the lighting issues and everything else.
Well, the lighting won't be affected.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it'll be affected because it almost looks like you have too much.
So you just, so if I give you a set of plans by end of the week? You okay?
As long as Mr. Rowley gets a chance to review.
Okay. Okay.
His schedule works, and he can, our next meeting is in two weeks, so that would be before, so, you know, we'll, we'll be meeting one more time before the twenty-eighth, so.
Only thing that's gonna affect your paving, well, what you're gonna change in the parking lot basically is take off that island.
Island.
Yeah.
Yes, we're ready to pave, yeah.
Okay.
We stripe the lines and make the hours go the right way.
Yeah, and make sure, um, that your engineer does show the lighting.
Yes, I got the.
Probes and the blue sign dimensions.
Well, the island's still actually theirs, isn't it?
Upgrade everything. Excuse me?
The island is not actually theirs.
No, I'm, just a painted one. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, you want these, uh? You want these documents back? Uh, next is Craig Canning for eighty-one Chappafernes Road for minor modification.
On the back of the property, there was two, uh, twenty by fifty foot cement pads.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for connect- disconnecting trailers and stuff like that. Um, what I wanted to do was just do a five foot apron behind here to save a little bit of money, because eventually I'm gonna pave all this. And, um, when I got looking at the chances of me ever disconnecting a trailer here, because it's right behind the door, it would block the door, so I'm just looking to do, I talked to Charlie, he said I had to come to you guys to get approval, just to do an apron behind it, a standard apron behind the overhead door instead of a fifty foot, twenty by fifty foot pad.
And just a standard apron?
Just like about, about, uh, an overhead door, you know, just a, the width of the door, about five feet deep, just to keep out, just to keep the, you know, pitch to it down and keep the, and I've, I've done that.
Enough to run a phone with that.
Exactly, and keep the dirt and stuff on the apron nut.
So if you remove those, what will be here now?
This is the same gravel that's here, this is all just gravel now, and then eventually, um, part of my original approval, you guys gave me permission down the road to behave it if I so choose, but it's a, it's a binder, gravel binder that was specked out.
And that's the only change?
That's the only change, and I have all my other signatures completed, um, from everybody else in town, so if you guys, uh, with your blessing, um, my, the building inspector told me, once you guys sign off or give me my final approval or whatever it is that, whatever it is that you do, then he'll give me an occupancy certificate.
Also, you also need the site, uh, Inspector Chandler, did you do a site inspection of this property as far as?
I've been out there a few times. Um, landscaping, I haven't seen that, Craig talked to me the other day, and I haven't had a chance to tell. Um, the word of the grading changes up and back, um, I can take a look on landscaping, can't do it tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Um, the landscaping is, we started it today, it'll be done tomorrow. Um, I was gonna try to wait till spring, but I, I know you guys wanted to get it done, so I just took some pictures of what we got done today, it'll be all done tomorrow. Um. And that drainage well, it's cut in now, we ran some water in it to make sure everything drains around. I'm not sure it's exactly the quadruple inch or whatever depth it was, but we ran water, made sure everything, it's the way it was supposed to.
To review his request to remove those pads and see if they make sense.
Uh, can you just, uh, just, say you can go back out on the landscape there? Charlie, this was those two pads.
Did you?
Yeah. Yes.
Is there a problem, do you remember, we do the aprons here?
No, you talked about, well, you've got aprons, a concrete apron out here, but that's not gonna be the same as this pad. What you were talking about was using a temporary pallet or something that could support the, not with the trailer.
Yes. What I would do, if I did disconnect, is just make up some wood trope, um, cushions, just to put under the jack stands to support them, um, if, if I do disconnect, ever disconnect a trailer out here.
Yeah, yeah. Is this, um, like a repurposed asphalt or anything, or?
Yeah, it's reclaimed.
Okay. And so he's just gonna have that here and compact?
Yeah, the idea was, these were gonna be concrete pads, so they could drop a trailer there, but apparently they're not gonna do that on a regular basis, so if he has to drop a trailer, he could put some temporary pads blocking underneath the wheels, the dolly wheels to hold it up.
Yes, yeah, the trailer, right. Yeah. That's fine.
The reason the doors here, when part of after the thing, I'd, I'd never disconnect a trailer, because it would block the door.
Right.
So that's why I just asked to change, I would've said something earlier on in the project, but I didn't realize it, and I was just trying to say doing those.
Yeah.
As far as sign off is concerned, the top course of mix has to be put in, your striping has to be put in, and your landscaping has to be complete before I can sign off and say it's done. But, um, as long as the board wants to give you a, uh, some leeway on this, then we can say we don't have to do that, I won't be looking for it.
I did the base coat and I have striped it, um, I was really hoping to do a good top coat next, next spring. I'll let it sit for the winter and do a top coat in the spring. Cause at that same time, I may end up paving some of this and some other stuff at the same time.
It's our call. And he's got, he's got it pretty well.
And this is the soil, this is the soil that was put in, that we repurposed, we, we dug.
Okay. So you'll have to negotiate something with your building inspector's office again, as far as the occupancy permit is concerned, because I can't sign off on the pushover.
Right. Right.
I'm sure something could be worked out, I believe there's something in the special permit that allowed you to make minor modifications without public hearings, or that's actually easier.
Right. Yeah.
You should just have to decide how you want to handle it, temporary occupancy, and, and, uh, working it out, hopefully, building inspector's office.
Yeah. Craig, when, when do you think you'll put your final quote of paving down?
Next spring, summer.
I mean.
I don't have any dates right now. I don't have any dates right now, it's all the, the, the base lid, base is down on the, uh, it'll be some time in spring or something. It's all striped, the handicap signs are up, everything's. Well, if you, if I'm to, would you, could you temporary do first, say what?
That's what I was gonna say.
I would.
I was just gonna ask you, who dictates, uh, the update that building inspector?
Well, I think you gotta look in direction for us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with June first. At work?
Right, well, they were, Craig said that, but, but.
Yeah. So, right now, so we're gonna talk about approving final pavement up until June first, and removal of these two concrete pads for the truck trailers. That's, that's it, correct?
That's it.
And everything else you've done?
Everything else is done.
Uh, it'll be the next couple days.
And Mr., Mr. Rowley, you still have to, well, you do a final inspection and your landscaping and all of that, so I'm sure.
Who said a motion?
Mr. Baptiste, are you ready?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve an extension on the final code of asphalt to June first, two thousand fifteen, in that we approve removing those two concrete pads. Um, I'm not sure what direction that is on the plan, but, um, east, on the east side of the two buildings, the proposed buildings, um, and allow the applicant to fi- finish that parking area come June first, when they make their final decisions.
Well, the intent is to remove those pads and replace with a five foot apron.
I think the apron's already in place, correct?
The apr- apron's in place, that's clear. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
And do we, do we need to reference Mr. Rowley's final inspection? In the, in the approval order, no, that's outside of the approval?
When we get that, we'll get that for the CEO.
Okay.
After that, do I have to schedule the bash, or am I all set now? Um, you should be all set until June first, if you're still doing forever. Okay, so I just, uh, need the building inspector sometime in the next, give him a week or so and hook up with him.
We'll be looking for you on the second.
You know where to find me.
Can we not, I don't know where you live.
You do?
Yeah.
Thank you.
See you, Craig.
Item C is a discussion Giancola Properties Minor LLC, care of J F Engineering. I was gonna say, you probably think we can see that way.
I have two copies of a large twenty four by thirty six, Paul Malus from J A at the American, also accompanied by Mike Giancola, he's the owner of the property, and I also have a lot by seventeen in color, in case that helps you flip through and makes it a little bit easier to coordinate yourself.
Uh, they visit, the purpose of their visit is so we can give a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for their. Seeking a special permit for this use.
What's the use? Is there a, is there a proposed use or just an update of the property?
Well, we're asking for a multi-purpose use on the property to try to benefit, trying to get different tenants in here, and, uh, Mike will be better off explaining what he's looking for.
Okay.
On that.
So, the building, the building is zoned, uh, I'm sorry, the property's zoned MR thirty, and MR thirty doesn't allow a whole lot of commercial uses. And so I went, we, we went before the ZBA a week and a half ago.
Correct.
And we had, uh, made a copy of the zoning bylaw and asked, you know, highlighted, I think there was probably six or seven uses, George, that we asked for. Um, office, uh, here we go. Recreational use, which would have been a health or athletic facility, educational use, oceanographic and engineering use, uh, offices, laboratory or research, uh, service establishment involving a wholesale business. Uh, industrial use, uh, which would have been light manufacturing. And so those are the, you know, I, I don't know who my tenants are, right, but those are the uses that, um, I wanted pre-approval from the ZBA. So that when a tenant did come, I didn't have to go back to the zoning board in order to lease space to them.
And the antenna of the plan is to subdivide or provide leasable, uh, building space, which we have subdivided five units on the plan right now, but those, those interior walls will be able to shift as Mike gets a different user who might require a little bit more space or a little bit less, so we'll have to rearrange those walls. Uh, we've come up with a parking schedule based on the layout of five, uh, buildings, using office, retail, uh, light manufacturing, uh, contractor's yard, so we came up with sixty-one parking spaces. Again, if someone requires a little bit more in office, then, uh, the general contractor's, um, bay or something's gonna be reduced a little bit, so the parking should off, offset each other.
How many total square feet is the building?
The building is seventeen six.
Thank you.
You're eliminating the driveway on the east end?
That is the side that, uh, Dave Andrade is there now. I wasn't planning on that, George. I, I, I am gonna put some LED lighting around the building, but, um, if you mean like a parking lot light, I wasn't planning on that.
But that, so that end of the building's, that paved area is pretty much gonna stay the way it is, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not planning any change, yeah, no, I'm not planning any change there. I, I'm gonna paint the metal side of that that's white, it's not very, doesn't sort of blend with the gray, so I'm gonna end up painting that metal part gray, and then the, his overhead door that is, you know, probably from the nineteen fifties, I'm gonna replace that and get that rebar out of there, and so I'm gonna clean it up, but, you know, that, that's about the only change I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, there is a different overhead door for him.
And he's still staying there, and he has this wing, is that correct?
He has the end bay, Mike, yeah, yeah.
About how many square feet?
He's twenty-five. He's twenty five hundred, yeah.
So there's about fifteen thousand left?
Yes, plus minus, yeah.
And we are installing some, uh, improvements for drainage on the site where, uh, basically all the water right now sheets flows across the parking lot towards the west, and eventually goes through the woods, and then eventually against the railroad track line. How about where, basically what you're gonna be doing is gonna be removing a s-, uh, piece of the parking lot about twenty by twenty, and we're gonna replace that with some line. We're putting an inline drain there, and that inline drain's gonna be, uh, connected to a first defense unit, which is a stormwater treatment, uh, product, and then basically that's gonna treat the water prior to discharging into the woods. We're also gonna be installing some K-Pod burn along the west of the side of the parking lot to direct the water towards the catch basin, lowering that load pressure, so that we're treating the water. Along the front of the building, we're gonna, uh, install an infiltration trench, so that way all the gutters on the front side of the building are gonna discharge onto that infiltration trench and, uh, reduce the stormwater that's leaving the site. Then all the overhead doors are gonna have floor drains installed, and all that's gonna be piped into, uh, an oil grit separator, and then eventually tied into the municipal sewer system.
Will that be done at the time that you get tenants, Mike, is that your plan? The, the, uh, oil-water separator system, you'll install that as needed when you get a tenant?
No, unfortunately, Mike, I can't. That's a plumbing code issue. A- a- and so if you, the, the plumbing code reads, if you have an overhead door, then you're, you, you either have two choices. You either have to put a bollard in front of the door, right, so, so a car can't drive in, or you gotta put your oil-water separator in. So, I'm just gonna do it, a- and it's done, you know, and then it, then I just don't have to think about it, so, that's my plan.
And what do they require, a thousand gallon oil-water separator for something like that?
Uh, no, just a standard, uh, four foot inside diameter, depending on the diameter of the pipe, you have to meet the certain depths. So it's just a standard manhole that's gonna be, uh, five feet deep and, uh, four foot inside diameter, so, yeah.
Just one note, I, I didn't ask the, uh, ZBA for o- automotive service.
Right.
That's not my intention for the building, but I, I'm just required to put the oil-water separator in because of the overhead doors.
Right. Yeah, right. No, I, I thought of it when I heard you said service as one of the possible uses.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any interest in, in doing auto, with respect to my friends in the automotive business behind me, I'm not interested in that. I'm thinking about opening a Ford deal, or, uh, uh, another truck dealership in there.
Well, you said scientific use, we can have a turtle rescue unit down there. I know some people have an expertise in turtles.
Well, I think it's consistent with the use of the building since its construction. It was originally manufacturing, it went on to wholesale and vehicle repair. So, uh, I don't, I don't see any.
There's some stone doors and windows there.
Really?
There used to be a ramp, there used to be a ramp in the back on this end.
I see, eliminating those few spaces right along the minor dab is a good move, because they cause people to stick up for traffic anyways. Um, any concerns, anything you wanna relate to ZBA?
I mean, I know that what you've requested as far as uses is, is broad in scope, because you don't have a tenant lined up, so I think that would be a concern if you get a specific tenant lined up that may have some exposures or questionable exposures, I guess, but I, I don't have any trouble with it.
I envision the building, Mike, um, I mean, I'm hoping there's somebody who makes widgets, a cabinet maker, um, a plumber, electrician. Um, that's the kind of uses I in, I envision, you know, in, in this building. There's small bays, you know, um, so I'm not envisioning national tenants.
Right.
Retail oriented, I don't, I don't.
Peach trees still live?
The, the peach tree?
Yeah.
Uh, you're welcome to, free peaches anytime you want 'em.
There's a peach tree right out beside.
Yes.
Was very prolific, but they all came with a side of meat, because nobody ever sprayed the tree. Very good. We'll, uh, pass the word to ZBA, but I, we don't have any objections here.
Okay.
Other than the, you know, the typical, you know, sight lighting, things like that.
Right.
Don't wanna see spillover. ZBA's got their own plan, you want these?
Yes, uh, they have their own set. I dropped off a bunch of them this morning, so it should be good.
When are you going back to them?
Uh, September twenty fourth. Two and a half weeks.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Building looks good?
Thanks.
Uh, we looking now for a motion to adjourn?
Might be easier if I stick these up here, a little closer for you guys to see, uh, be better than putting them on the.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
I gave you some leads.
Yeah, you might have to. I don't feel threatened.
Uh, for the record, we have the discussion of the modification to the Walmart site plan, Bowler Engineering.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jim Cranston. I'm with Bowler Engineering, representing Walmart tonight. Um, we're here before you for a, a minor modification to the previously approved, uh, site plan approval and special permit with the planning board. Um, shown on your left is the approved layout, uh, of the front portion of that site, closest to Cranberry Highway, also showing the future outlot parcel. Um, as was contemplated, at some point in time, that outlot would be developed. Um, and on those approved plans, I think we show some striping, a striping note on the Route twenty eight driveway saying that those, that would get adjusted at some point once that out parcel gets developed. And we know that SNH Realty has come before both boards for their permits and approvals. And now that they're proposing driveway connections to the Walmart approved plan, we understand that both boards now want comfort that Walmart is in approval with what's contemplated. So, we've been working with S, SNH Realty, uh, we've worked through their plans and comments, and we, we've worked together, and everybody's on, on board for these changes. So what's shown on the right side in front of you is, are the four driveways that they have submitted to you previously, just shown on our site layout to show those curb cuts that were not previously shown on the approved plan. So, that's really the only change, is that we would have four curb cuts accessing the outlot. Uh, the way that we've worded it is that those curb cuts would not go in until such time that they actually start construction. If they don't start construction and never build it, then we would not put those curb cuts in. This way we wouldn't have to come back to amend it if they didn't do it, kinda thing.
Uh, also, on the, on the secondary entrance from Cranberry Highway, they show a left turn lane, which is.
Yep.
Not designated on this plan, but you show it on, it's shown.
Correct. Yep. Um, good, good, good catch. Um, the, actually, we designed our driveway knowing that they would need a left turn lane. That's why it's thirty six feet wider or wider. Um, knowing that they would want to, um, have those striping improvements shown. We can submit to you for the record, um, you know, an updated plan showing that, that that's not an issue. We thought the curb cuts themselves were the, the meat, the meat of it.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I, I think the turning lane, the dedicated turning lane is an important aspect.
Yep.
As far as queuing up goes, that seems to be a.
Sure.
A concern at the Board of Appeals.
Uh, questions?
I just don't recall, those four curb cuts are the ones we, we looked at when you, you came before us, correct?
Yeah.
So there's no change there?
Nothing's changed.
They're in the same place?
Yeah. And on the plan you did approve, it did say for further changes.
Yeah, but, there's a note, um, I can show you that too, if you'd like.
Right.
So, it's not as if everybody wasn't on the same page, no?
This is.
We all lived through this sort of.
This is the amount with which the SNH parcel conflicts with the approved Walmart site plan. This is.
I'm sorry, I don't know why you say it's a conflict, George, because?
Because those items are not on the approved plan.
Oh, oh, I see.
Those are the.
Yeah.
Four pieces of overlap between the approved Walmart plan and the out parcel.
Yes, yeah.
That's the extent of the.
I, I remembered three.
Conflict is probably the wrong word to use, but.
Actually, I think it started with five, and we took one out, Johnny didn't like it.
Mm-hmm.
And, is that correct, Joe? And it was a conflict. I don't know if we gave up a cou- couple of parking spaces.
Yeah, the one in the corner.
Yeah, but that was a conflicting intersection.
Mister Rowley's reviewed these? Mister Rowley?
I believe it's in, uh, consistent with the plan that you would approve.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That's great.
So what do you need for our reaction, George?
Well, you need to determine whether you consider this a major or minor modification, and to the Walmart site plan now, not to the SNH site plan.
I, 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 I feel it's a minor, minor modification to the Walmart site plan, the way, uh, I see it, and that's probably seen a little bit too much. You know, because it was, it was a known thing from the get. Uh, I, you know, personally, I think it even, it shouldn't have even been an issue at this point.
No. I, I think, I agree with Mister Baptiste. The only thing I'd wanna see is a updated set of plans, so that they're on record, and that'd be great.
The, uh, yeah, th- that's, uh, it varies from the projected out parcel development that was done back when the Walmart site plan was.
Right.
But I, I still feel it's a minor change.
But, but it does match up with what we looked at when they came.
Yeah, it matches up to what was approved here through site plan review.
Yeah. Right.
So you entertain a motion that we consider it a minor site plan?
I would.
So be it.
Mm-hmm.
I'd second that. Mister Chairman?
Is there any further discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. You going Wednesday night?
Wouldn't miss it.
Yes.
When I got.
Is that a joint meeting, or is that? ZBA only?
ZBA.
I'm planning to attend. I, when I got there last time, everybody was gone. I was, I was late.
Yeah.
But, uh, glad you guys made it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll, you'll do a updated set of plans and present them to the planning board? I think, as the chairman referenced, maybe the left-hand turn situation in the, in the four curb cuts delineated with dimensions and things like that, just so that they're.
I mean, I don't wanna show this, though, because this.
You're not. All of this, all of the curb cuts.
Yeah, no.
I'm gonna say it's curb cuts to.
Just give us dimensions, please, so that we have details, so that our PR engineer, so our PR engineer.
Personally, I think you never should have been here, but.
I agree.
Do you know the business? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would prefer you sit up here with us, to be honest with you.
I can get you one, say, Mayman.
What you need is two more people sitting here.
Well, we have an application, so.
Yes.
Yes, I don't know, I have to make a, send an email to Mister Cronin, in fact, I thought he was gonna be joining us by now.
He's sick? Why don't? Was, was. Hmm. What'd he say? What'd he say?
Uh, anyway, um.
Okay.
Tell her she, all she has to do is haunt me, she'll do that. Okay. Um, we do have an application for the planning board.
Yes.
That, uh, spent supply to us tonight. Would you, if you care to invite him to our next meeting?
I will.
What interview?
Yeah. I can give. Do you need any details from me? Or?
What type of law did he practice?
Primarily real estate.
Okay, because I see in the bottom, he was on the Pembroke Planning Board at one time.
Correct, quite a long time.
But I'd be a asset.
He was chair of the, uh, planning board in Pembroke for quite a long time.
Even better.
Say it again?
Even better.
He's very, uh.
That would be good.
Very, very thoughtful, um, very fair man.
Compassionate soul, is what you need.
He is. He, uh, when he got out of law school, he dedicated his time to, uh, very good needy causes for quite a long time before he went into his own practice, so.
Not gonna be pulled more homeless shelter, though.
No, no.
Specializes in.
And he's, he's semi-retired at this point, so, and he is a, he's been a lifelong summer resident of the town, and now is a full-time resident of the town, as he rebuilt his family homestead into a permanent residence. Been in town for three generations.
Bobby B. Need to see what I'm thinking of.
No, it's not that one.
No, he's, he lives up in my neighborhood. He comes, he's a third generation attorney as well.
Um, Charlie, have you got anything? I did sign your bills.
Thank you.
Uh, unfortunately, I don't have the balances in the fifty-three Gs. I, I assume the money's there, but I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah. Uh, David told me it was mine in Walmart account.
Do we need to, uh, get an infusion in the best friend still?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
There was, uh, David told me it was like four hundred dollars up in the account before we were in some. And I really haven't made more than an hour's trip down there, because that was sort of where you could see how everything was gonna shake out here.
Mm-hmm. Would, would you, uh?
There's no point in going back there until they say it's done.
And, and you'll review the set of plans that JC Engineering's gonna prepare on the changes that we approved tonight, but the additional changes, to make sure that, because with the approval tonight, we allow them to move two parking spaces over. I'd like to confirm that there's adequate space there where they're moving, being moved to. And then they're removing the island, which we knew about. Uh, then JC Engineering's gonna redesign the lighting schedule. Be nice to see that. And then they're gonna place the sign on that foot that comes into the parking lot, or that little berm area. Make sure it fits properly and won't be.
That might not be a good spot, because it could, uh, interfere with the site distance.
I was concerned about site distance.
He said they were gonna set it back, the fellow, the applicant, said they were gonna set it back into the parking lot as far as possible, so it wouldn't interfere with that.
It would depend on a, it would depend on a height of the ground, and just what your visibility is when you come out to that approach.
Yep. Yeah. If you, if you would, please, that would be good, too.
Yeah. I would assume that if he, uh, gets a scroll as far as the size of it's concerned, that, uh, is he gonna come back to you with a location?
Of the sign?
Yeah.
He's, JC Engineering's gonna put it on the plan. He's, JC Engineering's gonna put it on the plan for you.
All right, so you take a look at it if you have the plan.
Yeah. Make sure it meets your standards.
On the, uh, new updated zoning bylaws, I think there was a scribble in this error. It says minimum, it says maximum height and then minimum height on freestanding.
Mm-hmm.
It says square feet rather than, you know, feet. The top one's correct, the bottom is, it says seven feet.
Maximum height?
Minimum, minimum ground.
What?
Says minimum ground, seven. And then maximum height, the top height is, is like eighteen, seventeen. I'll have to check and see if that's the case.
That sounds like it's an error.
What's it, square feet? I know that's an error. If, if that's the case, that sign's gonna be a lot higher than eight inches above the sign from it's. It's gonna be up.
It's, uh, well, it varies from the monument sign that we were hoping to encourage.
That's what we wanna.
Well, we have, we have monument signs listed, but if it's considered a freestanding sign.
No, it's monument.
Is it, is it a monumental sign that they listed?
Well, it's, yes, I would say in its appearance it is. It's sitting on two footings, but it's only eight inches above the ground.
I know, but you have to be careful now.
Well, then we need to make sure that we, that's something we can review because we did not approve that yet.
Almost doesn't matter anyways because all the signs are supposed to be approved and go up for a permit by the.
We just don't wanna make, we wanna make sure we don't approve something and then have them have trouble later.
You're not approving, it's approved by the director of the inspection services, the signs. All sign permits have to be signed off by him and actually have to have that little stamp on it saying it's town approved.
Okay.
Some of the changes were made.
Well, because we approved a monument sign for the doll store.
Yes.
I'm a little ahead of ourselves here, but in October, uh, our regularly scheduled meetings, the thirteenth, which is a holiday, and the twenty-seventh, which is town meeting. So do we wanna look to doing the sixth and the twentieth, though?
I just need to check my calendar at work. Just make sure I don't, I don't have anything.
Don't leave me either way. I won't be here for the twentieth.
We can adjourn to Nevada and have a meeting.
Come visit me if you want. Chicken Ranch is right out the door, twenty-five miles, twenty-six miles street.
Chicken Ranch?
Yeah.
I like chicken.
Yes, you a breast man or like me?
Would it be appropriate to adjourn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to adjourn the meeting at eight fourteen PM.
Do you have a second? Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all.